Good evening and welcome to our Smyrna Town Council Workshop to set our agenda for our April meeting. Before we move into our items for discussion, I'm going to ask Mark Atkins to do our pledge and Brian Hercules, I mean, Mark to do our prayer and Brian to do our pledge.
That's great. Father, we've just come to you today with, once again, grateful hearts for having a community that we can live in and be proud of, Father. Just, Lord, as we look forward towards spring and some of the events and the outdoor activities for families and children, Father, we just pray safety upon everybody. Lord, we ask that you continue to watch over our employees, keep them safe as they do their jobs, and just thank you for the blessings of the beautiful weather. Father, we also want to continue to remember the people of Ukraine as they tend to fight for their country and their freedoms. So, we ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Place the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Brian. Sorry, I almost got that mixed up. We will move on to our items for discussion. And item one is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Galls Incorporated for uniforms for the police department. Chief?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and council, this is our contract that we do for our uniform bids, and this year we only had one bidder, which was Galls Incorporated, and we're fine with that. Galls has been our vendor for quite some time now. We have had great success with them, and we're asking permission for the mayor to sign the contract.
Counsel, any questions? You sure don't want the police department running around naked, so we will make sure that we get that on the agenda.
I prefer they don't. Thank you. And no one wants to see me, though.
No, okay. Got it, chief.
That'd be pretty galling, wouldn't it, too?
So, we'll move on to item two, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement relative to the rental of the Thomas Edison Secret Lab exhibit from the Betty Brin Museum. Mike?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor and council. As you know, we rent a lot of exhibits out the SOAC, and this is no different. So, we've had this exhibit before, and we've coordinated it through the Betty Brin Museum. They did give us a great discount this time, and they did last time as well. So, a lot of times when you hold off to the end, they want to get those rented, and that's what we were able to do this time. So, the exhibit is STEM-related, a lot of education-based type things and exhibits in there or pieces in there, and it is $27,000 plus shipping for the time that we have here. It targets ages two to 12. And we have been meeting with some possible sponsors on this one, and we're hoping to get that, some of that paid for, and we'll let you know if we do.
Great. Questions for Mike on this? Okay, thanks, Mike. Item three is consideration of a proposal and authorization for the mayor to execute a sublease relative to a portion of Sharp Springs Park to Beatty Farms for wildlife and agricultural purposes.
Yes, ma'am. I know this is probably the first time y'all have seen that, because that's the first time we've had it before you. That area was farmed out there for several years by the Rhodes family, and we've had some requests and people interested, so we decided to put that out for a proposal, receive proposals on 64 acres of Sharp Springs Park. And if you're ever out there at Disco for the Greenway, you'll see that area. We had three people respond, Beatty Farms, Jake Jacobs with Jacobs Construction, and Greg Rhodes. They all submitted proposals. We had an evaluation committee made up of Kay Arnold, Jimmy Stitt, and myself. Kay deals with the leases, and Jimmy has a good idea of what goes on as far as the agriculture at Sharp Springs, and of course, I've been involved with that for a while. So, we had, the high score was Beatty Farms, and their proposal stated they would pay $127 per acre, and--
Springs, and of course, I've been involved--
Sorry.
That's all right. We'll be RA on how they kind of do that. So, we're recommending to approve a lease with N. Corn. So, the rest of it, they'll have to get whatever they're going to put--
On this? Okay. We'll move on to item four, which is approval of terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Thompson Hutton to perform--
As you know, Fire Hall Number One project was approved last month at the previous council meeting. This is to provide construction engineering inspection services by Thompson Hutton. Them and their architect help prepare the construction plans for the project. The items there listed are what they plan on doing for the work as far as a pre-con meeting, material shop drawings, submittals, reviewing those and approving them, and any post-construction punchless items.
Questions for Tom on this? Okay, we'll move on to item number five, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with the SEC Engineering to perform engineering design to add a pedestrian signal at the intersection of Sam Ridley and Weekly Lane.
As you know, we have an existing traffic signal there. There's also Tennessee Rehabilitation Centers just kind of up the road a little bit from there off Ninth Street. This is a route that the people from, who are staying there in the dorms, do like to go in the evening and afternoon hours. They come down this intersection. Currently, there's no pedestrian signal there, so we're looking to add pedestrian signals because it is a state route, and we are adding ramps. TDOT is requiring us to put together a set of construction plans, so this contract is to put together the construction plans for approval by TDOT, and then to go out to bid for contractors to be able to install all the PED signals, the ramps, and small sections of sidewalk.
Questions for Tom on this? Okay, then we'll move on to item six, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with the SEC Engineering to perform engineering design for a new traffic signal at One Mile Lane and Ammival Road.
With this intersection, there's been a need for some traffic control in that area. We did have some recent projects come through that started to trip that threshold for a need to have a traffic signal. We have existing mast arms on our boneyard that we've pulled from other projects on Sam Ridley. Not that they're one size fit all or anything, but they just happened to fit this one time, and we're going to be able to recycle those, use them on the project. This is, again, to get a set of construction plans together so we can go out to bid for this work.
Be honest, you just didn't want Steve to ask the question, didn't you?
Yes.
Brian's making y'all keep extras around now, isn't he?
Yeah. We keep doing--
We can show it to you, Mark, if you have town, there is one.
Any questions for Tom on this? Okay, we'll put that on the agenda. Item seven is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to approve the ranking of the selection committee for the Lowry Street, Lowry Street Streetscape Project Phase Three. That is a mouthful.
Yeah. We are, Charles is working on the Phase One project right now, the sidewalk project's in the downtown area. Also, he's working through getting, working toward those to proceed to construction for the Phase Two project. This Phase Three project just came through with a multimodal access grant, and that's going to provide sidewalks on the northeast side of Lowry Street, going from Enon Springs up to Sam Davis. We went out for, to hire an engineering consultant to do the NEPA engineering design and also do the CEI work. We ran, we had three respondents, Reagan Smith, Gresham Smith, and Wiser, and we're asking you guys to approve the ranking, and then we'll go out to get a contract with that engineering consultant.
Questions for Tom on this?
If I understand correct, you'll be, if it's right, number one, that's who you'll go after first, is that correct?
Yes, we'll, we'll ask them to submit a proposal, and as long as it's, you know, a reasonable cost, then we'll continue working with them, bring you all the proposal for approval for the contract so they can start on the project. But if it's something where it becomes unreasonable, then we can go to the second-ranked consulting company.
Okay. The reason I asked that was, the thing that caught my eye was the one that had the lowest past performance rating with the town was the one that came in first overall, so it's what I kind of--
Item B? Item B?
Where it says past performance on town projects?
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't have the individual. I just have--
It was a 53, and I think the highest was 55, but overall, it was the highest, that company is the highest overall.
Yes.
Just that one thing caught my attention.
Other questions? So, this'll get us sidewalks from, where'd you say it was starting?
Enon Springs.
Enon Springs, all the way down to the bridge.
Yeah, this will go to Sam Hager, and then, of course, the other projects will take us all the way to Hearts Branch Bridge.
Yeah, so, okay, perfect.
What does it consist of inside the sidewalk?
This is going to include some drainage as well. Currently, there's no curbing along sections of that route, so it'll include curbing, some drainage to keep that water off the road, probably fill in some ditches, install some storm drain pipes as well, just to be--
Movement utilities, any movement of utilities?
Probably not, but there may be some minimal utility, maybe minimal utility relocations, but usually sidewalks don't really--
No overhead lines done away with or anything like that, though?
I'm sorry, what?
No overhead lines done away with?
No.
Okay.
No, all the overhead electrical fiber, all that would stay where it is.
Got you. What's the width on the sidewalk to here?
Five feet.
Other questions? Perfect. We'll move on to item eight, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with HDR to prepare traffic response timing, timing plans for the signals along Sam Ridley corridor between I-24 and Old Nashville Highway.
With our new ITS system, we have some wave chronics detection at these intersections that are listed in here, Sam Ridley at Stonecrest, Potomac, Wolverine, and Sam Ridley at Old Nashville, as well as Old Nashville at Genie, which is going to be coming online here soon, and Old Nashville at Rock Springs Road. What that's going to allow us to do is, in the event that in off-peak time, we get an influx of vehicles to come to a certain leg of the intersection, the detection will determine that, okay, we've got 80% occupancy in a turn lane or straight-through lane, we need to be responsive and change the signal timing to one that allows more time for that leg to clear out. And then, it's also going to connect, integrate into the other signals along the way to say, you're about to get more vehicles coming toward your intersection, you need to increase the signal, the timing on that leg of the intersection to allow those cars to go through. That way, if there's not a person working at the time, our traffic operator may be off-peak hours, maybe after-hours at night, the system will kind of run itself as far as selecting the appropriate signal timing plan to be able to flush those cars through without someone having to be there and see it and change it manually.
Questions for Tom on this? Okay, then we'll move on to item nine, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a work agreement with Monitoring and Management Services LLC to update the fats, oils, and grease control program for the wastewater treatment plant.
Yes, ma'am. So, the fog program, it does have an impact on lift stations in the wastewater plant. So, we have a plan in place now. It needs, severely needs to be updated. Inspections are becoming very difficult with staffing because there's so many. We're up in the upper 190s right now. Most of it's restaurants, there's some apartment complexes and stuff. So, MMS has extensive experience and was actually recommended to us by the MTAS consultant we work with at the wastewater plant to rewrite the plan, recommend changes to the ordinance that references the plan, do inspections, and they also have a database that collects all this data and information for viewing and for the state when they need to see it.
Questions for Mike on fats, oil, and grease control? You might be able to make some money off that.
Maybe.
Any questions? Then we'll put that on the agenda. We'll move on to item 10, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a professional services agreement from the firm of Kias Rogers, Barger, Holder, King, PLLC, KNR, to perform title work, closing services, and lender release documentation for the North Lowry Waterline Project. Jeffrey L.?
Yes, Mayor and council. As your premier, you've been many years now, we've utilized Larry Talbert's office for most of these services. However, Mr. Talbert is retiring, and so Kias and Rogers is already one of the four outside firms that is, that is on our pre-approved list that we have a master agreement with. But obviously, with a specific project, we want to do an individual contract for that to lay out the terms. Speaking with John Rogers, he was honoring the same price that we had been paying Mr. Talbert. Previously, Mr. Talbert's office did not contact the lenders though to receive the release documents and those types of things. But on those tracts that do have mortgages where banks need to be contacted, that will be an extra $250 per tract. And so, we talked about doing it hourly or pertract, and I think it'll work out better for us, especially if they don't call back very often to do the pertract. But they will be performing all those services, title opinions, closing services. They'll maintain the acquisition table and communicate directly with the town's utility director.
Okay. Questions for Jeff on this? Okay, we'll move on to item 11, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation R3 zoning of property located on Tax Map 54, parcel 19.00 requested by Sean Collins on behalf of Keith and Carolyn Bryson, containing 68 acres. The property request is located west of Rocky Fort Ammival Road, and this is a second reading. Hey, Kevin?
Mr. Mayor and council, there's nothing that's changed on this since you looked at it on first reading. This is an annexation request for one parcel of land, does connect to the town in a couple of different locations, but it would also surround one track that would not be within the town. The land use plan would support a medium-density, single-family residential development in this area. Surrounding zoning is R3 in town and RM in Rutherford County. The town would be providing all services except for water, which would be provided by CUD. Just one thing, this one is a little bit different. This track does not have any road frontage. There is an adjoining property owner who did agree to provide that access to the town if it is ever needed. It is a vacant tract, so there's not any, there's no one living there or anything like that at this time. The planning commission did review this and did recommend approval, and staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this? Okay, since this, we've already seen this once, we will move on to item 12, which is consideration of a resolution relative to a plan of services for property located on Tax Map 54, parcel 19.00. Anything to add?
There's nothing to add, no.
Any questions on this one? We'll move on to 13, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 18, parcel 6.12, 6.13, and part of parcel 6.05 to go from I-2 to I-1. It's requested by Eli Waldron. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately 2.39 acres and is located on 3rd Industrial Boulevard, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yeah, again, Mayor and council, this is when you looked at it last month, and nothing has changed. This is two tracts of land and a part of a third track that is requested to be rezoned from I-2 to I-1. It's, there's a lot within that airport innovation character area, so that either district would be consistent with our land use plan. Surrounding zoning is a mix of C2, I2, and A1. Again, there was a concept plan submitted, that is, this is not a FUD, so there's nothing holding them to that development plan. That is their concept of what they're wanting to do with the property. They did provide that to you. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval, and staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin? Okay, seeing none, we'll put it on the agenda and move on to item 14. Consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 29, parcel 19.06, and part of parcel 19.08 to go from C2 to C2 with an H2 height overlay. It's requested by Mr. Patel. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately 2.71 acres and is located at the corner of Sam Ridley Parkway West and Expo Drive, and this is a second reading.
Yes, Mayor and council, this is a property that is currently zoned C2, and this would just add the layer with a height overlay to it. The land use plan, again, would be supportive of this request. Surrounding zoning is all C2, and some of the hotels in that area have been also granted a height overlay as well, so it is consistent in that regard. The maximum building height in C2 is 40 feet. This request is to add a height overlay to a building of 61 feet 4 inches, and we, the planning commission did see the site plan for this as well last month, and it has been approved pending this approval. We also, there is a subdivision plot that has to be done to move a property line, and that has also been submitted this month. So, the planning commission did review this, did recommend approval. Staff would also recommend approval.
And, refresh my memory, chief was good in regards to the fire--
Right, they're providing access, there actually is going to be an access, well, to Expo Drive, but also to Colony Drive, which will provide good flow for the truck. The widths of the drive aisles all meet the requirements for the aerial truck as well.
Perfect. Any other questions for Kevin? Okay, we will move on to item 15, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 50, part of parcel 12.02, to go from C2 to PCD. It's requested by Rob Mulchen. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately 1.05 acres and is located on Lee Victory Parkway, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and council, this is, again, something you all looked at on first reading, and nothing, we don't have any additional information, nothing has changed on it. This is on Lee Victory Parkway. Again, it's part of the 24 Gateway area, is our land use plan for that area. Surrounding zoning is all C2. This proposed PCD is for 7,000 square feet, eight-bay automobile service and repair business. The elevations do meet design review. Access will be from a private drive which connects to Lee Victory Parkway, and this private drive is owned by Parkway Baptist Church. And proof for that ability to utilize that drive is, would have to be submitted prior to, with the smell of the site plan. A subdivision creating this lot has been approved, but it's not recorded at this time. Water and sewer will have to be extended to this property from off-site, and this property is all part of a larger parcel that is in the floodplain, and so the grading plan with a, to create buildable lots out of the floodplain would have to be submitted and reviewed and approved. This would be one of the two lots that would be created out of that, and a letter of map provision will be required to be submitted and approved by FEMA as a part of that. Again, the planning commission did recommend approval, 5, 4, 2 against. Staff would recommend approval.
Question for Kevin on this?
Kevin, any feedback since the last meeting?
We have, I don't have, not received anything additional from them, no, regarding that access drive. There has been, the plat that I referenced does show an access across the adjoining lot to the drive, so that has been addressed. But as far as the access to the actual drive itself, we have not received anything at this time.
Kevin, refresh my memory, but it seems like when we addressed this last time, y'all had talked about ways which y'all had suggested to them that they resituate the building on the lot so that the, all the cars wouldn't be out front, or the bays wouldn't be out front, and there was no willingness to adjust it on the lot, is that correct?
I don't know if there's, I would say there's no willingness. I think there's, there is an easement on the left side, which does limit somewhat how far forward they could push it. It's a overhead power, electrical easement. So, that made it difficult for them. They do want, that is part of their advertising, though, is that, and so they did present that alternative to have additional landscape in the front with some, that would help hide it somewhat. But, so, I mean, I would say there's, there's some hesitance to remove it. I don't think there was a downright, we don't want to move it, but they just, with the easement there in that location, made it difficult.
As chief of planning, they did bring, they did bring to us a revision on how they were going to try to screen that with their landscaping island in the parking lot. That was one of the concerns I had as well, and they have some vegetation that, you know, it's like very thick-growing type of trees that will block a lot of that view. The glass on the front, if I'm remembering right, was reflective glass. It's not like see-through doors, and it's all brick facilities, so. I think y'all had talked about, like, turning the building in the back way, but they wanted the bay doors visible on the front, is that correct? Well, that easement was an issue as well. I mean, we did talk about that, that the easement creates a little bit of a hardship for them to work that building in a different manner. So, we were just trying to find a way to work with them and still protect that view from the parkway.
Other questions or comments? Okay, we'll put that on the agenda and move on to our item 16, consideration of items to be sold at surplus sale through GovDeals on an online auction company. Hey, Rex.
Mayor and council, in your package is a list of surplus items that need to be sold at auction. The list includes town vehicles, seized vehicles, computer items, and other equipment. The town seeks permission to conduct an online auction to sell surplus items. The auction will be advertised in the Murfreesboro Post, on the town's website, and on Channel 3. All the surplus items will be sold through GovDeals, an online auction company, and the staff is asking authorization to conduct this sale.
Questions for Rex? Rex, it looked like there was some good items, but not necessarily anything I want in my Easter basket this year, I don't think.
A lot of cars, a lot of vehicles.
Cars, ink cartridges, monitors, computers--
Be a good deal for somebody.
Could be.
18 pieces of 3x3 dance floor, Mary Esther. That would be for Tim.
I don't dance very much. I think Tim's the dancer in the group. Okay, Rex, we will happily put your other. Okay.
This is a five-year loan. Interest, something happened, and we didn't do the project together now, so that would be one item we need to add, and I'll, I'll get this to you guys in your, in agenda quick. The other one is the sewer rehab. We've been informed that the loan documents are almost ready. That would be a 20-year loan. Not sure what the interest rate is yet, but I don't think it would vary much from what we're seeing here, and that's basins A8 and A9, old part of downtown Coleman Street down in that area. So, hopefully, that'll get, get those people some relief there. And again, we'll put that as a placeholder. If we don't receive the loan docs, we'll have to move it again. With this, we will have to do a public hearing at 6 o'clock at the night of the council meeting, so we'll have to recess, do a short public hearing. Jerome will come, he's the engineer on both projects, and do a short description, and then vote on it after we come back in from recess from the council meeting.
Questions for Mike? We will put those on as placeholders and get that taken care of. Okay, under other tonight, directors' reports. Hal, anything?
A man.
Steve?
A man.
Rex? Charles?
A man.
Charles always has something.
He always does.
Has to.
Lowry Street, that's what he's got. You're going to talk about Lowry Street, aren't you?
Yes, ma'am. Lowry Street, our Stans electric will be back on the project on Monday. We'll work on the streetlight foundations and the underground utilities, so they'll be back on Sam Ridley. We had the final walkthrough with TDOT, the contractor, and our inspection team, and they were very impressed with the project. We just had some punch-life items that we will continue to work on. Lee Victory Rec Park, Mike and I met with the contractor this week, and they will be back on the project on Monday. Blair Road from Sam Ridley to Laverne, that section will be closed April 18th through about the end of June, maybe into mid-July. Old Nashville Highway, the developers talked to their paving contractor this morning, and they are mobilizing on site, so they will be ready to pave that section next week. And it'll probably take them a couple of weeks doing base and topping.
Tell me again where it's going to be closed?
At the end of Sam Ridley, as you turn right going into Laverne. That will be the section going left will remain open, it's just the section from Sam Ridley--
The section going right.
Ridley going into Laverne to the driveway entrance of the High Point 24 project.
Will we be able to do any sort of signage or anything prior to that, just to let people know?
We've, Kathy's put out a, she's working with Laverne PO also, but there is detour signs already up.
Okay.
And they've already done those, but they're covered right now, but, and we've worked with the school transportation, so they're aware of it coming.
Where are city limits there?
Right at the curve, soon as you make that first curve and go right before the bridge of Culver there.
So this will be partially in Smyrna and partially in Laverne then, is that right?
Yes. The driveway to the development will be in Laverne, but this is the connecting road that they will be using, so they are building this road at their expense.
Other questions? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Carl? Chief? Mike? Mike? Kevin? Charles? Charles, I'm going to call you Charles II.
That's fine.
Charles I and Charles II.
I've been called worse. I just wanted to send out a thanks to Jonathan Hemmenway, he's our traffic operator. When the tanker truck flipped on I-24 just north of Waldron Road, Jonathan was watching the signals and actually watching the video feed of the vehicles stacking up in some locations. He was able to quickly enact some of the diversion plan timings that we already have from TDOT into certain signals along Sam Ridley. He also saw backup around 2:30, 2:45 that hit Weekly Lane and Sam Ridley, because a lot of people decided to go that way to come home and avoid I-24. He was able to adjust the signal timing on it and get everybody through pretty quickly. Kept from having red lines on the, if you looked at the map, you didn't see any red lines in Smyrna, saw a lot unfortunately in Laverne and some down in Murfreesboro. We were able to keep everything flowing really well through here, thanks to him, and he's working really hard, doing a great job with that. Our ITS system really kicked in and did a great job for keeping our roads clear.
Great, that's exactly what we want to hear.
I called Brian, I was actually in that traffic and was routed off at I-24 onto Sam Ridley, and I called him, told him I didn't even have to stop till I got to Potomac, and I got stopped by Potomac and then didn't stop again the rest of the way down. It was not backed up at all.
Great, yeah.
He handled it well.
Great, that's what we like to hear. Thanks.
Thanks.
Jeff? Chef? Chef, I have to tell you, we had your lunch today, it was so good. Got to spend a little extra time on the treadmill though, especially from those desserts.
Chef, you might want to mention, don't we have something special coming up?
Good afternoon, yeah, we do have an Easter brunch that's coming up on, on my mind, I can't remember. It's April 17. Seventeenth. And we will start at 10 o'clock from 10 to 2, it's reservation only. It's a little higher than last year, but it's going to be just as good.
And you can call for reservations?
Yes, you can.
And you can call the event center for reservations, and I would highly recommend it, it is a great day. If you leave hungry, it is your fault.
I agree.
Thanks, Chef. Todd? Chief? Kathy? Amber?
Mayor and Council, I do always have a couple of things that I want to share.
We'll call you Charles III.
Charles III.
C3, C1, 2, and 3.
Okay. I think we've got a couple of pictures, I want everybody to look at this picture, because this was a great day for the town of Smyrna and for some kids from across this county. We, the Smyrna Event Center did a great job of hosting the Rutherford County Schools' Special Needs Prom this week. Kathy and I got to go down, I think even the newspaper was there, there were some things in the paper this morning. But you talking about having some fun, these folks know how to have a good time. We had a ball. They were all dressed up, as you can see the prom dresses and the tuxedos and masks, and I got tickled, I was telling one of the teachers, I said, you know, I remember going to my prom, and when the music started, it took about 30 minutes worth of music to get anybody dancing. This was the first song, I think. They didn't waste any time getting to the dance floor. Just a great event and just a lot of fun, and just a very, very special time for these kids and for the town of Smyrna, so my appreciation to everybody involved at Rutherford County School System. Next, I want to welcome Bluff City Soap. We had the honor of going out and being at the ribbon cutting, and I will draw attention to this picture. If you'll notice in my left hand and in Rex's left hand, there's bags where we shopped for our wives because we knew how important it was to take gifts home.
And honestly, Todd has no bag.
And I was going to say, if you'll notice, Todd's hands are empty.
What is it about him buying gifts for his wife?
Well, we do welcome Bluff City Soap, and we appreciate the chamber coming down and the ribbon cutting, we had a lot of fun, and it's a great store. And I even, I'll tell you, a couple of people noticed that it was a bigger store than some of the other locations like Murfreesboro have. So, it's a nice, nice store, and would invite everybody to go out and take a look at Bluff City Soap. Next, of course, we're winding down the time on the VITA site here at Town Hall, located in the back of our building downstairs. But if you are one of those folks that are lagging behind on getting your taxes done and need some help, the VITA site is a free site for you to get your taxes done. They are by appointment only, by calling 615-830-7940, or visiting www.yerlokaluw.org/vita. They can set your appointment, and they are, they do have appointments on the weekend, so if you are having trouble getting here during the week, make an appointment for Saturday. And April the 9th will be the last day that they'll be down there, because we have something following right behind April 9th with VITA. I think that next Monday or Tuesday starts early voting, so early voting will be coming to Smyrna for the first of, I think, four times this year, we'll have early voting participation in Smyrna, so again, if you need help with VITA or your taxes, come see the VITA folks, they do a great job. Last but not least, love where you live, that's me getting on my soapbox, I guess, but we continue to battle the litter across town. We actually had somebody send us a picture of one of the local trash companies that dropped a bag of trash out here in front of our building, and Chief and I were talking about it tonight. We actually have a picture of the truck and a license plate, and we've reached out to that company to ask them to make sure they do a little better job and take a little pride in our community. I want to share with you, and I'm going to be like Chef, I've got the date, it's 22nd, I was going to say the 23rd, April 22nd, I've sent an email out to the council and to all of our directors, we're going to be participating in an Earth Day event, and we're going to use that time to do a cleaning event at Sharp Springs Park, and then also here on Lowry Street at our normal location where we do the adopt-a-mile through the streets and Public Works Department. So, any of you that would like to come out and help us from 10 to 12, we're going to take a two-hour break on Friday and go out and clean the streets, put our money where our mouth, or put our feet where our mouth is, I guess, we're going to walk the street and pick up some trash. I'd love to have any of you join us that are available to do so, let Kathy know if you're coming, so we can make sure and put, with Tom and his crews, make sure we have all the people in the right places, and with Mike out at Sharp Springs. So, looking forward to that event, so the town is going to be participating in cleaning up a little bit, so. Mayor, that's all I've got tonight.
Jeffrey L.?
Brian stated earlier today at Rotary, but we have finally solidified all of the agreements for the tracks on Genie Lane. There's two owners and three tracks that are waiting to close, but the deals are done, we're just now waiting on the actual closing to occur.
Great, thanks, Chef. HG?
Yeah, last week, myself, Jerry, and Brian had the occasion to go out to the Stewart's Creek High School for the ribbon cutting for their indoor athletic facility. It's a really nice building that the teachers, students, parents, administration have all got together and built this beautiful facility. It's got batting cages and the whole nine yards in there.
Great.
Very nice.
Anything else?
Oh, you can probably shop local would be a good thing for you to do, Mary Esther.
I always shop local. What's the other thing?
Well, you've been kind tonight, so I didn't think I needed to tell you.
I thought it was more of a blanket statement, not directed directly at me, family.
Sometimes yes, sometimes no.
Okay. Timmy?
You know, I actually don't have anything tonight.
Jerry?
I don't have anything either, but just say the same thing as HG did, that really enjoyed going over Stewart's Creek, that is really a nice facility they have there. And also, I think next week is spring break, so I think your teachers and children and kids and all enjoy that, be safe as you're out playing, playing outside, so appreciate what you do.
All right, a couple of things, just to remind folks about all of our Recreation League's signups that are going on, kind of getting towards the end of that, they're starting to fill up, so if you still want to get a kid or an adult into a program, you probably ought to move quickly. I know that the Adult Softball League, Monday night, Thursday night, are, we're not full to capacity, but we're full enough that we don't need more teams, that we could take more, but we're not recruiting teams at this point. Friday night could still have a couple more church teams, but we're doing pretty well. And then, baseball, fast pitch, flag football, soccer, I don't know what else is going on. Basketball and football are off-season right now, I think, so I think we're, I think that's it. Also, congratulations to Hollingsheads, they actually had their move-in day, I think it was last week or the week before, so they are actually in their building, working. I think they have a grand opening or ribbon cutting or something coming up, but congratulations to them. I can tell you that a few people that I've talked to that actually work in the building are super excited. They said that the facility they came from, I guess in Nashville, felt more like a dungeon compared to this, so they, they really like what they've got, and they're, they're happy to be home in Smyrna. And then, on the screen, I think we're going to have on the screen, the Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church has got their Women's History Month event going on. They're going to have LaShan Dixon, Rutherford County Health Department Director, the Miss United States of America Community Volunteer, and, oh, sorry, Miss United States of America, as well as the Rutherford County Health Department Director, so she does both roles.
She does.
Yeah, and then Carolyn Peoples will be there, who volunteers around the community, probably well, very well-known, and our own council member, who's not here tonight, Raquel Peoples will be.
I think they did that on Sunday.
Did they do it this past Sunday?
I think they did that Sunday, yeah, they just did it.
Well, I thought it was coming up this Sunday.
Yeah, so, no, they just did.
Do it again. Yeah, do it twice, I just announced it so they could do it again. So, in that case, never mind, congratulations. And thanks, thanks to Raquel for representing the council there, so.
Absolutely.
That's all I've got. I didn't have any dates on it, so, didn't know.
Jeffrey L. just mentioned all the Genie Lane properties he's been working on, I know he's been busy in Nashville this week, on behalf of the town too, so Jeff, thanks for pouring yourself into the community there and doing the work. Want to say another thank you to the codes department, I know I've had a couple of calls and emails and things from neighbors concerned about other neighbors, and the codes department jumped on that, and I think letters are going out, so sometimes when they hear about it, that's when they know about it, and they get right on it, so. You mentioned early voting coming up already, and we have a special guest here tonight with us, Rhonda Allen sitting in here, and I know she's going, yes, early voting's almost here. Rhonda's a candidate for the county mayor, and I just want to speak on that just briefly, because I know some of us have heard, why is she running for mayor, and you're the mayor, right? So, there's some confusion to a lot of the constituents that she is running for county mayor, and this is our town of Smyrna mayor. And so, if there's any confusion out there, that's why you see different signage out there currently, it's not time for us, we'll see our time later, so. And last but not least, my little granddaughter's having a birthday party Saturday, and I can't wait, so happy birthday, Lenny, that's all I've got.
Now, you also have?
Well, I do have something else. Kathy, you reminded me I needed to do this. We wanted to welcome the Red Bicycle to Smyrna. Brian, myself, and the council members here all attended their soft opening, I believe it's Friday night last week, and then we did a ribbon cutting and a grand opening on Sunday. The Red Bicycle is now part of our community, they're open for business, it's a wonderful little establishment there on the corner of Lowry and 41, or it's Lowry and Sam Hager Street right there, they've painted the building white, it's really, it really looks good. And if you get an opportunity to go down and visit them inside, you'll be impressed by what they've done inside, too. The food was delicious, the staff is super friendly, and we welcome them to Smyrna, so.
Absolutely. Great, a couple of housekeeping items, I want to invite everybody, everybody out to the Easter egg hunt, it returns this year. The Smyrna Fire Department and Police Department are busy planning a fantastic event for our community, so mark your calendars for Saturday, April the 9th, at 1:00 PM at Lee Victory Recreation Park. Children's ages 1 through 12 are invited to participate in the egg hunt, and the Easter bunny will be on-site for photos. Thank you to Smyrna Natural Gas Department for sponsoring the event. I will tell you, if you are five minutes late for the event, there will be zero eggs left, because it looks like a vacuum cleaner has gone out and sucked everything up off the ground, because I cannot tell you how quickly they.
Even the grass.
Oh, everything is gone, it's gone, so make sure you are on time. The second thing is, I've been a little busy this week, but have been so excited to get back in classrooms. I got to enjoy the opportunity to speak to Dr. Montblanco's Advocacy and Policy Change Class at MTSU last week, it's an undergraduate and graduate level course in the sociology department. I'll be honest, I was a little bit nervous, I didn't know what kind of questions they would ask, would they be really tough questions, but they were really excited and energized. We had a lot of discussion about, initially they thought the main way to, to get out and, was to go to Washington DC and to march and all of that, and we had a lot of discussion about, you know, what affects you daily is your local politics, and so we had some really good, healthy discussion. Also, got to participate with Raquel yesterday at Laverne Middle School and for the Women's History Month program, so thank you to them for having us out to participate. I also was at Rocky Fork Elementary School with eight classes of first graders and their teachers to speak about my role as mayor, and if you've not ever gotten to spend two hours with first graders, I highly encourage it, encourage you to do that, because you will greatly appreciate the teachers that we have here in Rutherford County if you do. But as you can see, they had a huge sign for me when I got there, those students right there were my greeters to walk me to the class. Each one of them stuck their hand out, introduced themselves, told me what class they were in, told me what grade they were in, and so they have student ambassadors at their school that do things like this. We also had the opportunity today to participate in Rotary, Brian gave a great PowerPoint presentation and did a wonderful job, and then we answered some questions to the Rotary staff, and then I got to speak at Sima.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, I was trying to remember which day. I spoke at Sima yesterday and at Parks on.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. And it's really great to get out into the community and to spread the word about all the great things that we have happening here in the town of Smyrna. So, thank you to all of those organizations for inviting us out to be a part of your group. Rhonda, I was going to have you come up to the mic if there's anything big we've got going on in the county that you kind of want to talk about. I just want to tell you all what a great job Rhonda does in working with us as, here at the town council, you know, when things are going on in the county, we have to have somebody there that we can talk to, but also somebody who works well with others and other county commissioners, because, just because something's going on in Smyrna doesn't mean those people in Last Cassis that represent that area, and if she doesn't have a good working relationship, then we may not always get that vote, so we appreciate what you do for us. So, any big stuff going on in the county?
Something that you all may not know about, because it's actually happening in Laverne, is there's going to be a new charter school that's going to be opening. That's a little bit different for us, we've never had a charter school in Rutherford County before. It is technically a public school, it will be funded by public dollars. We haven't really quite figured out what that relationship's going to look like, there will be others coming. There are two more applications that have been submitted, we have Health and Education that's coming Tuesday, and one of those applicants is coming just out of a courtesy to come meet with the Health and Education Committee for the commission, because they don't have to have any connection really with the county commission at all, even though we're the funding body, so we're feeling our way through this. But, but yeah, you'll probably be hearing a little bit more about that, especially when they open up in Laverne. I do know you've probably talked about it here some, but Weekly Lane is their convenience center is going to be completely redone, and so that's. center is going to be completely redone, and so that's going to be exciting and be a greater opportunity for the folks out there to not be backing up on Weekly Lane any longer. And I don't know if Judge Alexandra, if she hears the littering cases here, but I do know that there's three judges in Murfreesboro who do, and they have pledged to, to have citizens that have public service hours, they're going to be picking up litter, they're going to be reporting to the workhouse and be picking up litter, so if she hears that, that may be something we want to consider doing here as well.
Great, thanks, Rhonda. Council, anything else? If nothing else, then we are adjourned.